It is 7:00 PM. Welcome to the November 4th, 2021 Manistee City Planning Commission meeting. Praise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You? Take roll.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Here.
Commissioner Samansky?
Here.
Commissioner Remberto?
Here.
Commissioner Weiner?
Here.
Commissioner McBride?
Here.
Commissioner Yoder?
Here.
Chair Whitliff?
Approval of agenda, this time the planning commission.
I'd like to amend the agenda.
Okay.
That's okay. There's memo there for the, from the Tree Commission.
Yeah.
I'd like to put that last under new business. And then the memo regarding the RV ordinance under old business.
You'd like to do that, eh?
I'd make that motion.
A second.
Ah, I don't know.
Discussion? Please take roll.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Samansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Remberto?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes, thank you. Now we can approve of agenda, at this time the planning commission can take action to approve the November 4th, 2021 agenda. Or motion?
Motion to accept the amended agenda.
Second.
Motion by Bob, second. By Roger, discussion? None, please take roll.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Samansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Remberto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes. Now with this, just going to canvass the commission if there's any conflict of interest with our tonight, meeting tonight?
Chair, I would, I would like it to be known that I am a member of the Tree Commission.
Okay.
So if, if you guys don't want me to participate in that conversation, that's fine, I can, I can step out or whatever, but I, I'd like the record to reflect that.
What do you think, Mark?
I don't have a problem. Anybody have an issue?
Step out or no? No? Let him be. All right, we'll let, we'll let you be.
Talk. Five more minutes.
Nice try.
Let you be. Just behave.
Approval of minutes, this time the planning commission can approve the October 7th, 2021 meeting minutes. Motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes as recorded.
Motion by Marlene, second.
I'll second.
Pam, discussion? None, please take roll.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Samansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Remberto?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes, thank you. Correspondence, has there been any correspondence received?
I've had no, no correspondence.
Moving on, public hearings. We will open the public hearing on 155 Eighth Street. Looking for applicant presentation, so. Please approach the podium, name and address, please.
Good evening, I'm Lisa Morley, my address is 6445 Miller Road, Manistee, Michigan.
Tim Morley, 6445 Miller Road, Manistee, Michigan.
Okay. Could you explain, go through the plan for us?
Intention of what you're planning on doing.
Thank you for having us tonight. We are here proposing a special use permit for 155 Eighth Street. We are looking at turning the building into a four unit, two bedrooms each, one bathroom. That's the old restaurant.
Uh huh.
It is.
Yeah. All right.
Each unit will be roughly 800 in, I believe, 30 square feet. Each unit will have its own washer and dryer. We are, our intent is to have efficient, very efficient electrical utilities.
Each unit has its own egress entrance. We have parking on the side street there, adequate parking, and we have parking on the east end, west end of the building.
So that original drawing actually is not, there's been so many architectural drawings since then. On the far east, are two additional parking spots, so there are six parking spots total.
Off-street parking.
Off-street parking.
And there's already a curb cut on the east end existing.
Yeah.
Exterior of the building, we're going to try to keep it as much as green space as we can. We talked to Zach a little bit about it, on the east end, try to, since the, it's not, the building kind of encompasses the majority of the property, to, to leave the east end with a more water-tolerable surfaces, you know, as far as driveways and things like that, sure. To absorb some moisture and things like that. The west end of the structure, the parking area has already been paved, it's existing.
These are all two-bedroom units?
Correct.
Correct, yes. The goal is, I've been working with Citizens Energy a little bit, with some of their programs, we're trying to create a high-efficient electric building. High-efficient electric furnaces with conditioning we're putting in, for each unit. And all LED lighting, energy stirrups.
Yeah.
Make it affordable for our tenants.
Are you involved with the two homes on the east end and one? I see they were working on them at the same.
Yeah, I noticed that they've been working on those, yeah.
So the house on the south side, the white house, you?
I don't know, I do not own that.
Okay.
I've been approached to buy it, but we'll see.
I'm sure you have, imagine the blue houses too.
I'm not sure what their plans are though, I noticed they've been in there.
Cause he's gotten them out.
I'm glad to see they're cleaning them up, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's been a nice sort of that whole corner.
Yes, it has. But yeah, looks good to me.
Hitty council, I believe, in our application, I have it documented, but I believe it was around June, we're at the second phase of approval for Oprah, we're waiting for our next level of permitting to have final state approval. But Manistee City did vote and pass it.
I appreciate that.
Does this building have a basement in it?
Cross.
Okay.
And when do you figure they'll be completed and ready to rent?
I'm shooting for spring now, yeah. We're working on it throughout the winter, it's the plan.
How much do you have done now, in the building?
I've been working with the city building inspector, he's allowed us to go in and do a few things, just to kind of get things cleaned up and demoed, based on hopefully approval tonight and our construction drawings, get our building permit immediately. Got the outside cleaned up, you know, trying to make it more presentable for folks to live around there.
It would be a huge improvement for the area.
Absolutely, yeah.
The area used to be, years ago of course, was always well-kept. The area's kind of fallen down a little bit, but something like this will help.
Absolutely.
Do we have a price range? For this or these rental units?
We've been tossing it around, it's basically, we're going to see market rate of lumber materials, we're going to wait to see what the final cost of the building's going to cost us.
Yeah.
That's going to have a big factor in it.
Yeah.
So they're fair market rentals?
Correct.
Not, not low-income, it's?
Fair market.
Yeah, especially with lumber, last year you paid it.
Chair, if I may?
Sure.
What are your, what are your lengths of leases on the rental units?
One year.
One-year leases, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, you got enough of that in town.
Thank you.
Another can of worms there. Yeah.
Zach, I don't know what power slide number it is to show the blueprint.
Are you looking?
Get one more down.
This one?
Yeah.
There's a better one.
Better one. Keep going.
There you go.
Yeah.
There's one, well, it's not really showing up, there you go. There's.
We'll have to try to keep as spacious as possible, and each person has their own little deck area, which would be nice. You can see there's four separate deck entrances. I think that'd be, the tenants will appreciate that.
Is wood on the decks, or is it, is it going to be composite?
I'm thinking to start with, we're probably going to re-treat it. We'll see what budget allows.
Sure. Just looking at maintenance.
Oh, I know, yeah, I'm going to try to keep it low maintenance, you know, to have a binocled material on the outside for siding. We'll have to look, we'll have to cross that bridge when we get there, you know, that'd be the last thing we can do.
Yeah, I see you put a new roof on it already.
We started that, yeah, we started trying to straighten some things out, and I've been, was working with the, with the building inspector, and he was corresponding and stopping by and checking on us.
Yeah.
Trying to get things cleaned up, you know, trying to get a little jump on, I own a construct, my wife and I own a construction company, so it was, we had some free time with the guys.
Sure.
Wanted to get some demo going and.
So is the inside gutted now?
It is, yes.
It is.
This looks like one ba- bathroom and a laundry room, is that correct?
That is correct.
Each unit have its own laundry, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. The only thing for a family, if they can get along, otherwise the police will be down there, but. Yeah, it's a good idea.
It's got walls.
They could use.
That might be the reason they all have individual entrances.
Smart move.
And sharing a hallway.
Smart move, yeah.
Exterior lighting, we're going to have basically a porch lighting at any point, so it won't be any type of, you know, instruction or, you know, that, there's not going to be obnoxious lighting for parking or anything like that for the neighbors next door.
Well, technically, outside lighting already there, existing, because we are on the corner, there's already.
Street lighting.
Street lighting.
You going to do any lights, lighting in the eaves at all?
I wasn't planning on it. We're going to start off with the porch lighting, just basic porch lighting for each, each entrance, and I think we'll go with.
Yeah.
That'll be adequate, we've gone down there several times after dark, and street lighting, I don't think we need to add more.
Yeah.
We think that the parking area, especially in the west end, needs, we may add something there possibly. But it won't be something that turns on and off with, and blind the neighbors, for sure.
And that would be something I would recommend come back to, for administrative approval. If that, if that were the case, if you guys made that stipulation.
Right now, we're just planning on the four porch lights that we have, we have in the drawing.
Sure.
And I think that would be fine.
I think so, yeah, it'd have enough information.
Yeah.
Other apartments or rentals here in town, is, or is this your first project?
We've had other homes in town that we've, we've purchased and sold them. We have other properties in other townships that we are currently working on our own and.
Any other questions?
I'm good, Mark, thank you.
Good, Marlene?
Yeah, I'm good.
Pam?
I'm good.
Joey?
I'm good.
You know, again, I, I'd just like to applaud you for making this investment in Manistee, and especially down in that area. I think this is, you know, what we're looking for as far as the, developing that area with, you know, market rate rentals and quality and affordable as far as utilities, so, you know, again, I think you're going to be a great addition to that neighborhood, so I, I wish you the best of luck, and I think you're going to probably have to have a lottery to figure out who the poor people with, or couples that rented.
We'll be in high demand here once we get rolling.
Yeah, I, I think so. I think the school system would probably just rent the whole building for you, just for their teachers.
It's kind of part, we're kind of partial to that area, my, I grew up in that, in Maxwell Town, so.
Nothing wrong with Maxwell Town, young man. I did too.
It told me a lot of stories about Maxwell Town back in.
Ed? And again, I, I think a very nicely done floor plans, again, providing as much privacy as that, that footprint would allow, so.
Thank you.
Now, are these furnished apartments, or?
No, not, not furnished. They'll have washers and dryers, of course, your kitchen stove.
Full kitchen, yeah.
Full kitchen.
We've tossed the idea around, because I know a lot of the factories in town, you know, corporate people coming in, but we don't want to have the short term.
Sure, and I applaud you for that.
I see your drawings, you have the landscaped, are you landscaping them, or is that?
There will be some landscaping around the exterior, we are limited, because we don't have a lot of, a lot of green space, what's existing there, but yeah, we're trying to peaceful landscaping of the town.
There used to be a submarine anti-aircraft gun in front of that building.
Really?
It's now, now, that same gun is now over by the VFW.
It was, that building was the VFW.
It was the VFW, I remember that now, one of the guys that works on my crew, he, his parents were, that was her wedding reception was in there, back in the 60s.
And there's nothing wrong with the 60s either.
He's causing trouble tonight.
A good plan, I wish you all the luck.
Clean and nice.
Touch needed.
Yeah, this goes well for us, you know, entertaining.
Are you awake?
Yeah.
Well, thank you, and this is a beautiful plan.
Yeah.
Very nice addition to Eighth and almost Line Street, so. We just, will start, be the start of cleaning up the area, you know, improving the area, let's put it that way.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's it.
So, from the Site Plan Review Committee, I had one comment from the city engineer, and he said it does not appear that they're, they're increasing the impervious surface of the site, so they would not need to manage stormwater. He said a pre-imposed impervious area calculation would help confirm this. So, if that's a stipulation you guys wanted to make, that's something to think about there.
Yeah, well, if that's what you.
Well, I know that house kitty corner.
It's just an added expense, why would we bother?
They had a lot of water problems there when we had those, a couple of years back when we had those big, heavy rains and flooding. And I think they worked on all the storm sewers in that area at that time.
If, if that's something you want me to reach out on, I can, if that, you know, if you wanted to wait for that answer.
No, I, I'm, I'm pretty sure they did, and so I don't need to do that.
Bob, do you know if they worked on that area?
I can't think of what they've done near. Done surveys in the area, that's about it.
I don't remember, so. Okay. That it, Zach?
That's all I have from the Site Plan Review Committee, yeah.
Public comment, at this time, anybody in the audience, if they have a public comment on that, please come to the podium, name and address, please.
Beverly Wilkins, I live at 159 Eighth Street, directly across the street from this. And I've been the Mrs. Krabitz of the neighborhood, keeping an eye on things.
Good thing.
It's just nice to finally see a site plan, which I've asked to see, so, because I have no idea exactly what's going on there and what they're creating. One of my concerns is what your target market would be, because in that immediate area, it has gotten a lot nicer. The riffraff are gone, the drugs are gone, because I photographed them and reported them to the police with their pictures and their drivers. Almost called one of your guys. I, again, a target market and who might be policing this situation if, you know, depending on the people that you get in there, because it's calmed down in that neighborhood, and I know I certainly want it to stay that way.
Ma'am?
Yes.
Address the council, please.
I'm sorry, trying to be polite.
Commission, sorry.
Everything has calmed down in that neighborhood, and I would certainly like to keep it that way. And this was what I was concerned with, who would be willing to move into that area, because it still does need a lot of work. You know, but it's getting there. That's really all I can think of, because it was nice to hear from them and see what exactly is going on there.
I think these are attractive-looking and they're very efficient, and I, I don't think they'll have a problem renting any of those units. Like he said, they'll be waiting in line, and I think you'll get a better old class of people renting them, that you won't have.
That's the, the thing that I'm concerned with, because, you know, some people have moved in next door to me and have caused a lot of grief. And I would be the one to be calling the police.
Well, I think they live in, in the area so somewhat that they will be monitoring, that I don't think you'd have to worry about that.
I'll still be looking.
It's always good to have eyes.
Oh, yes. That's it, really, they, almost everything I was wondering about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There you go. Keep your camera handy, just in case.
Move to discussion? Anything?
Mark, Mark?
Yes.
Before you move to discussion, you should, you should call for more public comment.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah.
So is there anyone else who would like to have anything to say on this? Nothing?
Nobody.
Okay, thank you. Now, we'll move to discussion.
Sure.
Bob?
Yeah, that building needed a lot of TLC badly. When it was the restaurant, it was starting to fall apart pretty bad.
It was.
Going to be, seeing what's happening in that neighborhood, things are starting to go the right direction. Maybe this will be the impetus to get the rest of the area to clean up more, and bring better groups in there. So it'd be a nice quiet area.
Well, again, I, I think the, the quality of what they're building is going to attract the right kind of, of tenants. And, and I'm, I'm assuming that they're going to be able to get a, a good, a good rental fee for a property like this, especially new, with new appliances. I don't think that they're going to have to show up more than once to be able to get a renter in. And we have such a shortage in Manistee for, for quality rentals as it is long-term mentally. There's quite a few short-term rentals that are high-quality, but long-term rentals are tough to come by. I think it'll be a good thing for the neighborhood as well.
I agree, they look wonderful, I like your plans, I'm thrilled that they're going to be year-long leases. And I, I agree, I think it'll be a good thing for the neighborhood, and fair market value is going to keep, you, I, I think you'll be able to get very good rents.
Joey?
No, I, I appreciate it for the city in general, I hope that this type of building, this type of project is contagious, and that investors see what can be done with, with the available properties that are out there, see that the, hopefully that the process has been fairly painless, I'm not sure, but. And that they're very, it looks like they're very thoughtful units, when I could have only two bedrooms, can't remember that long ago. But it would have been great to have a unit like that when I was still renting, so I appreciate the contribution to the city, so thank you.
And honestly, I think this will have, be attractive to seniors as well, retirees on one floor and very compact space, might, might be able to have the first inner-city senior living facilities.
I, I'm on the board at the senior center, I can help you.
And I'm a senior.
You're the senior.
The senior.
Figurehead.
Yeah, right.
Marlene, anything?
No, I'm, I'm thrilled as heck to see something take over, because that has been such a nice sort, you know, all those homes and restaurant and that, I'm, I'm really proud as punch that you've taken on this endeavor, and I think it looks great, and I can't wait for it to open, and maybe we can get a sneak peek before people move in.
Yeah.
Thank you, Rog?
Nothing, I would just like to say what everybody else said, so I'm not going to say it, but good luck, I got no problem with them.
Excellent. You know, I want to thank you for taking that step of having, as Mick said, Pam, members having long-term rentals rather than short-term rentals.
Yeah.
That's huge for Manistee, this is a nice project, very well thought out. Down the road, it can help rehabilitate that, the old highway corridor. So I know there's been movement, talk of rehabilitation of the old highway. This is a nice step towards that, so, thank you.
Your father named Ed, by any chance?
That was my grandfather.
Yeah, you're going way.
Like I said, there's nothing wrong with Texas. I knew him.
Sounds like a freestyle name, too.
Yeah.
I know a few of the Morleys are freestylers.
Yeah, yeah, that's it, they all come back, they all come back. Yeah.
Well, we good?
Yeah, we're good, buddy.
All right, any more comments there, Rog? Anything?
Marlene, you okay?
No, I'm good.
Okay, all right.
All right.
We will close the public hearing on 155 Eighth Street. And now we will open to 26 Arthur Street, applicant presentation, please.
Holy Christ. How you doing, Bob?
Come on, you got to move better than that, Bob.
Robert Horvath, I live at 6,500 Ray Road Street in Bear Lake. And I'm here to inform the building we have on 226. We're going to use it for, we've been using it now for storing construction equipment, scaffolds, ladders, pumps, things that we don't use very often, and I'm open for questions.
Commissioner?
Any questions?
Chair, if I may?
Sure.
Just, just a reminder here that, that Bob had split the hotel property there, and this was a special use that he, that was required to bring that property into compliance, so, just a refresher.
Thank you.
So, yeah, I'm kind of lost, so he owns both parcels?
He, he sold the property on the, on the hotel, he sold the hotel.
Okay.
He did split just before that.
So he could keep the garage?
So he could keep the garage, and it requires, it then required a special use permit to bring it into compliance.
Okay.
So.
I see, well, good for you, Bob.
Any questions, Rog?
No, it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, it is. Marlene? Joey?
None.
It's strictly garage, or you're not living, you're not planning. Any changes would have to come to us anyhow, right there.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. No, I got, I'm good.
I know.
It's just storage, is all?
Yes, it's just storage.
Mr. Horvath, any plans on putting up fencing, or do you feel that the area is secure enough with the way it is, or?
It's, it's, the doors are lit, I think it's secure enough, you know, we've never had any problems there, it's well-lit around the building, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Bob? Good, we're good, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Back?
Finally retiring, eh?
Oh, yeah.
I believe you would, take care, kiddo. Okay, public comment?
The Site Plan Review Committee had no comments on this project.
All right.
Yeah, right.
Thank you. Public comment, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment on this? Anyone at all?
Anyone?
Nothing? Okay, thank you.
Please, somebody make it.
Any discussion? Are we all good? We're all good, Rog?
Yes, sir.
Marlene? Okay. Pam, Shelley, whatever your name. Okay.
Interchangeable now.
Yes. He's been working on this for a while.
Trust me. And we'll close the public hearing, so.
All righty.
Public comments on agenda-related items, if anyone in the audience that would have a comment on the agenda, please come to the podium, name and address, and you have up to three minutes. Anything, anybody? Once, twice?
Nobody.
New business, 155 Eighth Street, special use permit.
I make a motion that we accept the permit, Eighth Street, as submitted.
I've got some comments.
Okay.
If, if I may, um, give me just a second here. I just lost my notes. Here we go. Um, I do have some recommendations as far as stipulations on this project. Um, you guys can take them for what they're worth.
Mm-hmm.
The landscaping on there, you know, if, whether it, it looks similar to the, to the picture on there, if we, if we wanna see another landscaping plan, I think is something that should probably be discussed. Um, I think another stipulation should be the, the lease lengths because if, um, the special use permit stays with the property, so if there was a sale later and somebody had something else in mind, they would still be under that special use permit requirement. Uh, I think we should also have a time, time limit length on there, so typically we do two years on special use permits. It's, it's kind of a redundancy, but I think it's important to always put that on all of them. Um, we've talked about the lighting plan, um, and whether if there's lighting changes that, that, that should come back for, for an amendment through me. And, um, I have site plan, but I don't know why. So that's, those are the comments I have.
Uh-huh. No, if I could, uh,
Sure.
Along with the comments you made, as far as looking into it, would our building inspector from the city be running regular inspections on this, uh, housing development? Like every three years or some?
So they, they would have to enroll into the ren, the rental inspection program, um, from there. You know, that's not my area of expertise, but I, but I, I understand there's a two- or a three-year requirement on, on the inspections there.
Oh, so it will be checked into periodically?
Yeah.
It should be by the building inspector, yes.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, okay.
So I make a motion that we, uh, go ahead and accept the, uh, the sup, with the amendments that was asked, the one-year lease-
Yeah.
-period added. Uh, I, I, you know, from what I see, I don't think landscaping should be a, a, a big issue. I think it's, it's already looking better than it had in the past, so, uh, I think the, as long as there aren't any specific landscape changes, I don't know that there's any specific-
Now, per the, per the drawing, is that what you're saying?
Per, per drawing would be fine, yeah, and, and any changes being addressed by the, the planning, uh, office.
And what do you, tree commission have anything to say about that?
No. It's not in the right of ways, so the tree commission wouldn't be involved?
Oh, okay. Yeah, and the lighting and whatever, uh, Zach suggested, I, I wouldn't think.
Okay, so there's a motion on the table with, uh, Nancy, you have what you need?
With the recommended, um, with the recommendations.
Can, can we hold on just a sec? I just wanna make sure Nancy has, has the proper, do you have what you need there?
I've got what you said down and they've accepted that.
Mm-hmm.
Your things with us.
Is that, is that a fair assessment, the things that I recommended?
Sure.
Except the- Some of the site plan that-
Recommendation.
Zack's admissions.
Yeah.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second?
I'll second, or whoever.
Clean? Any further discussion on this?
No.
None, please take a roll.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Smansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Humberto?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes, thank you, congratulations.
Yeah, good luck.
Um, new business, 226th Arthur Street, special use permit.
I'll make-
Their motion?
Make the motion we accept the special use permit as is.
I'll second.
By Bob, second by Shelley?
Yes.
Any discussion? None, please take a roll.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Smansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Humberto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes, thank you. 74 Arthur Street, uh, special use transfer.
Yeah, just, yeah.
So we have Willie McKenzie here to, uh, to kinda explain, but, um, essentially 74 Arthur has, is trying to purchase the proper from Paula Damski and the, the special use permit goes with the owner of the property, or with the property, so the transfer needs to take place to be official. So I'll let Willie make any comments he might need to make here if you guys have any questions.
Good evening. How are we doing?
Good, how are yourself?
Um, so as you guys know, we operate, uh, my name's Willie McKenzie. I own Heritage Farms Manistee and Authentic 231. Um, we got a special use permit to put a grow facility in the back there where the storage units used to be. So I put together an investment group to purchase that property from Paula Damski so that we can do this. And essentially, right now, we need to just transfer the special use permit into the name of the new owners.
From Paula Damski to you?
Correct. Paula Damski is now a little bit more retired.
Yes, oh, okay, all right.
Okay.
And you have approval for this building of marijuana that you wanna build?
Correct. We have a special use permit from the city. We have building permits.
Okay.
We're all set.
Okay. Any questions?
No.
No?
No.
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mick, second.
I'll second.
By Roger. Further discussion? None, please take a roll.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Smansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Humberto?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride? Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes. Thank you, congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations.
Old business?
A new business.
So yeah, new business, one more thing.
The view shed.
One more, one more, Mark.
Oh, the view shed, yes, new business with the view shed.
So, uh, we received a memo from the, uh, tree commission chair, John Helge, um, asking the planning commission if, if they would look into, um, view sheds in the city and whether that might be something that was added to the zoning ordinance. Um, the, the tree commission has seen some, some issues and, and is concerned there might be more in the future, um, and, uh, wanted the planning commission to take a look and if they didn't have an issue with it, that's okay, just, you know. But, uh, if they did have, you know, concerns and they wanted to amend the ordinance, then that would be something, you know, a public hearing would be held and people could weigh in on that. But, uh, that's the gist of the concerns and, and I guess I can take any other questions from there.
What is view shed?
So the, so, so the concern is that, you know, if, the, the, the classic example is, well, I own property here. I can see the beach and somebody who owns a property in front of me puts up a house. You know, and they grow a tree there or, you know, that, obviously the tree commi, commission's concerned about the tree. But, you know, it could be, it could be a home, anything like that. Um, there was an instance that occurred in, in, I believe it was in Nekama Township and they did not protect view sheds in, in their zoning ordinance because of this, uh, if I remember correctly. So somebody could, had a house and couldn't see the lake, s, a developer came in, cleared trees to make room. And then when they started constructing, they said, no, you're ruining my, my view and, and, you know, lawsuits can, can occur. So, uh, to mitigate that, they said, well, no, your view shed is not protected. That's not your property.
And so they're currently protected in our ordinance?
Currently, they're not acknowledged.
They're not acknowledged at all, so they wanna, they wanna clarify it?
Yes.
Okay.
So, you know, if the commission feels like that's something that they wanna handle, by all means, we, we can work through that. Um, if, if it's not an issue, then, you know, it would be appropriate to tell the tree commission as much.
What's the feelings?
I'd like to see them come up with the more stricter things about that because we don't need everybody complaining about, well, their deck is in my way, need to move, I can't see. That's, it's eventually gonna come down the line.
But it's peaceful.
Well, but that's what the view shed rules would have. If you don't have it, then there isn't, from what I understand, if you don't have view shed, then there isn't any, you can't basically sue the person for doing what they wanna do with their property.
That's correct.
If you have view sheds, now we open, literally, we open up a can of worms in, in existing, potentially in existing spots because they can say, well, this happened after I, you know, I wasn't there when I bought the house and now the tree is growing in my way.
So it would take place, and it, the, the language could, could be amended and, and altered however, you know, you guys deem fit. Um, the, 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 I guess, how you framed it, whether you say the city wants to protect them or not, I think is kind of what the tree commission is asking, rather than just saying, it's not there. They're saying, well, maybe we should look at it and decide whether that's something we wanna put in the ordinance as protected or unprotected. Um, I hope that, I hope, clarify the, the question there.
If you let everybody just say, you can't build here because you're blocking my view, that's a problem.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Or telling people, well, you know, your tree now has gotten too big, so you gotta cut it down, or all of those other kinds of things that mother nature could do to, uh, impair somebody's view. I think not having it is, is much better. And, and honestly, as we talked before, there really aren't that many areas in Manistee that it would even pertain. There's only a handful.
There's a handful.
But it-
They are a handful.
Yes, they are, and-
It's my understanding that the tree commission is the only one who can give permission, who can give permits out to cut down trees? Is, that's, that's the way I read it.
Tree, trees on, on public property.
Or on, or on, or on city?
Yep.
So it's their decision whether to trim the tree or not?
Correct, yeah, the tree commission makes, makes the decision to trim the tree, but their decision, decision could be, um, guided by whatever's in the zoning ordinance.
Something in the ordinance, but then it creates other-
Yeah, but it sounds like for now, or at least for historical purposes, we've, we've escaped litigation for a myriad of reasons, but that doesn't mean that in the future-
There's, there's one, they're getting ready to try it.
Okay, so if somebody wants to develop and say, you know, I, I want that tree cut down or I don't want that tree cut down because it will increase the value of my property.
Correct.
So that's what, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we're better off to leave it as is, personal opinion.
It sounds like that it's open to litigation as is.
As is not. It would be if we have a view, if we have a view shed, now we, we create litigations for ourselves as well as for other property owners.
There's, there's no clarifying language in the ordinance right now, though, which, which means-
Which, which means you don't have any view shed. You would have, the, what they're asking for is that we create it. Right now, we don't have it, so-
They're, they're, I just wanna be clear, the tree commission is just asking you guys to examine it. They're not, they're not saying one way or the other.
Looking for directions, as I understand.
And, and my, I think we're better off not having view shed in, in our little town. I think we, we would cause more problems for ourselves.
And, and this isn't something I, I think, you know, a decision should be made tonight and I, you know, I think-
Oh, yeah.
I mean, it came in early, late in the week, so, I mean, however you guys feel, but, you know.
I think we can have the, uh, tree commission come up with their ideas of what they feel it should be and let us look at it.
Has the city attorney weighed in?
Not to my knowledge.
I was really hoping John would be here tonight so that we could talk to him about this.
Yeah, maybe some proposed language.
But all of the research, well, again, the two or three hours worth of research that I did on it, all leaned towards a no, not a yes.
Oh.
And, and like I said, O'Nekama Township is, is the one that, you know, it's, it's a community that, uh, the county planning department serves and, and that's one that, that we, um, that, you know, that's why we noticed. And they said, for just that example I gave earlier, that was why they said, well, no, it's, it's, it's not a protection we're worried about. If it's somebody's property, it's their property and, and that's what it is. So if the tree goes, grows old and you lose your view?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, right.
You know, it's too bad, but, you know, if they wanna cut it, if you guys wanna make a deal, that could be done too, so.
And if, say, we do, we do nothing or we recommend nothing, um, is the language as is currently written, would it reflect that?
So, so because there is no language, it, it would-
Not at all, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, and-
We have building restrictions, though, that talk about how tall buildings can be in certain locations, so there are those restrictions already there. This is about topography.
Okay.
In other words, I, you know, again, if I wanted to build and landscape up on my yard, if you have view shed, you wouldn't be able to do that.
Got it.
It has all kinds of ramifications.
Where I'm seeing the problem right now, certain people are complaining about certain trees locking their view.
Correct, right.
Trees are not even anywhere near their property.
And, and that's just it, this, it's-
Got it.
We're just trying to-
The, the only place that I've, you know, again, in a, not an expert, certainly, you know, over an hour or two, but, uh, where planned developments, where you're developing a whole community, then they can create these view sheds so that people are buying the higher-priced properties can maintain their property values, uh, as they're, they're building. But, uh, for us, I think it's, of course, it's been out of the barn for years.
All right, so you want us to think about it?
I, yeah, I think it'd be appropriate to, to bring this up at the next meeting.
All right.
We could, we could all do a little more research then.
Next month.
Can we get some, uh, more opinions from the tree commission about the-
I think it would, yeah, if you guys would want some of the-
Mr. Sailor as well.
Just a man on the street, dude, just what's the opinion of the people?
I, I can reach out to the tree commission as well as, as Mr. Sailor and, and see if we can have them at the next meeting or at least give an opinion.
How about, do we have, was that, would be a problem with the, uh, appeals board, zoning board of appeals?
For which one?
For this problem, if, you know, somebody came in and said, hey, this guy's got a tree or something, could they deal with it? Or don't we have an issue?
Because it's not in the zoning ordinance, it wouldn't, it wouldn't go to the zone.
Okay. No, I, yeah, I see. Sure.
Next meeting or future meeting, we have the, that Mr. Sailor here or his opinion?
Uh, I'll reach out and see if he can't give a memo or-
Mr. Helge.
Yeah.
Yep.
There you go. All right.
Okay. Old business, um, RV ordinance?
So previously, uh, I, what was it, the eighth, the August 5th meeting, we, we talked about, um, that was August 5th for city council. They, they expressed some interest in the planning commission observing the RV ordinance and whether they thought there was some improvements they could make or maybe it was fine. And, and I provided examples previously at, at July 22nd meeting, I think it says, uh, some examples of neighboring communities and, and how they handle that. Um, I just didn't want this, this to die on the table. I just wanted to know if there was an answer to that I could give back to city council, whether it was, if you guys were okay with it, that's fine, or if we do wanna, in fact, look at it some more, so.
Can you refresh my memory as, is this, is this not allowing any RVs, like, visit relatives in the driveway for a couple of days or?
Currently, RVs are allowed on the street for 48 hours, consec, consecutive 48 hours. Um, there's different examples where, you know, I, I think it was Frankfurt says no to that, others say yes, timeframes. It's, it's, truthfully, it's difficult to enforce, you know, I can't, I can't be out there at all times, Chief Glass can't be out there at all times. Um, but it's, the, their, the city council wanted to know if, is this something that we wanna tackle or not?
How is this for boats also, Zach?
Yeah, sa, same thing.
Boats and trailers and-
Yep.
How is this for just on the street or is this in, in yards?
So it's for boats on the street as well as in your front yard, which is the plain of your front house. Often it'll be in the driveway, but that's still considered your front yard.
So we would, we would set this to have one boat? Let's say a person, a family or a person has two boats. They have them spread in their yard, their front yard. This would be for one boat, right?
I, I believe it's, now you're really making me think here. I don't believe there's a limit on the street. I believe it's one on your, in your front yard and then in the backyard. I don't think there is a number.
As long as you, as long as it's in the side of the back, you could have another boat.
Correct.
You shouldn't have it in, in the front plain.
Now, I, I take a walk in the morning and there's a few homes in the area that have two boats.
Oh, my God.
Uh,
Camper.
Jacked in their yard and they're not on the side, they're right in the front, so.
When I was working in Luddington, I saw they're having the same issues that I've seen campers parked in front of residences for three, four months at a time. With electric cords running from the houses to those camps.
Yep.
And then you come-
So-
I'm not in favor of that, but like I have a relative who comes up for like three days. He's called my driveway.
Right, and you're okay?
That's what I'm gonna make sure.
They're more of a transfer.
My-
I don't want people living there.
My view from council was, is that one of the council members thought that our current ordinance was too restrictive 'cause they wanted to be able to park their boat on the street and didn't think there was any reason why they shouldn't be able to.[1798.58] on the street, and didn't think there was any reason why they shouldn't be able to. I personally think that that's maybe good in, in one or two areas in the town, but for the majority of the community, it's not, we have alternate parking in the winter time, and, and again, most of our streets, if you have a boat parked in, in, on a side street, you're taking parking away from people.
Well, some of the streets are very narrow as well.
Exactly, so, and, and parking is limited on a lot of the streets in Manistee, so when you put boat there for the season, you're taking away, somebody else is having to walk a block or two to get to their home, so I, I think our current ordinance is, if anything, is not restrictive enough, but I'll let it go as it is more of an enforcement issue now than it is having proper ordinance, I think the ordinance we have is pretty close to, to what we would call middle of the road, it's not incredibly restrictive, but it's enough to be able to protect the community at large and, 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 uh, other people that are, are living in and around the community, but, um, I don't know, there would, more restrictive would be harder to enforce than what we already have.
I, I don't, I don't think that I would be in favor of something more restrictive, I do, I do agree that we don't want people living in RVs and boats on the, the, the road, but considering we are a tourist destination, a lot of people have second homes here, a lot of people have friends that come up, I mean, this is, this is a place that I love to invite people to, um, and a lot of them wanna come for a week at a time, so to tell them, we have to go out there and you have to move it every forty-eight hours, if I don't have enough room in my driveway or my, um, and there isn't a...
Shelley, just to be clear, that, that is the rule on, on the street?
It is, and, and there isn't a, at least not that I'm aware of, a viable business that provides an opportunity to do short-term storage, um...
But we actually do, that...
Do we?
Yes, yeah, there are, there's two or three in Manistee alone.
Okay.
And, and, and some of the, and also, uh, doing some checking, there are, some of our, some of our larger, um, parking lots, well, also, you can get permission to park your RV for a longer period, not, not long term...
Yeah.
But for a week, and, and then, like I said, most of the time, if they're up here in an RV, they're camping somewhere, and we would like it to be in...
They are, in a, yes, generally speaking.
And not camping on the street with a hose...
Yeah, I'm, I'm in agreement about the streets in general, because, like, like Pam said, it, most of them are narrow, um, and, you know, I had a, I had a neighbor that I think, I think the RV was out there all summer long.
Well, and we've had incidents where people are living in their RV in front of the, somebody's home, and, and that's always a challenge.
Yeah, that is a challenge, and, but then that goes to enforcement too, so I, I would, I just probably wouldn't be in favor of something more restrictive, but I don't necessarily, um, I empathize with the, the enforcement part of it.
Whose, whose duty is it to enforce it, is it yours, or is it the police?
City.
The city police and I work collaboratively on that.
If he, if he cites somebody for it, then it would be the city police that would actually do...
Call and complain to the...
And that's kinda how it works now, I mean, we don't go and, and, and send the police out, you know, looking for violators, it's when somebody says, you know, look, there's been a boat parked in front of my house for a week, and I'm tired of walking, you know, two blocks to get home, that's normally when we get the call, and then that's the, when they go out and tell them that you gotta move, you know, your boat, or their, or their RV or whatever it is.
Marlene, you have a comment?
Yeah, to me, I think it's a safety issue also, on Fourth and Hancock, on Fourth, there's a big trailer on a block, and you come, come around on Hancock, I think it is, he's got a boat and a trailer there, now, when you come through that street, I go there to pick up a friend, I have to almost be out in the intersection, 'cause I can't see around that, and I had an incident on my street, backing off the driveway, I can't see if another car's coming, I'm almost half in the street before I can see, so I think it's part, partly, uh, a safety issue too.
I know the, uh, where that is, so...
And, you know what gets me, is the police walking down these streets, you see them passing each other, they can see it there, they've been up there for weeks driving that street, and they don't enforce what rules we have now, and more.
But, but like I said, if you, if you would have made, if you'd make a call and say, you know, hey, this is an issue, then they would react, and, and it's, you have to be sympathetic to them, we, we don't, you know, again, we don't want them to be a Gestapo that's constantly going out and, and citing people for infractions, we just want people to hopefully voluntarily maintain the good order of the city.
Agreed.
And, right, and to add to Mick, just a simple call to the police, um, they can take care of it, so, Roger?
Usually it's just a warning to the people, give them a move-in, you know, even if you call it, just give them a warning ticket.
Yeah.
That's all it would take, just, second offense would be where you get them.
True, true. Yeah.
And, and my goal is, I, I don't wanna write, have, to have Josh write anybody a ticket, I, I give people warnings, I give them ample time to, to remove them, um...
If they, if they get warnings and they don't acknowledge them, then you can go after them, it's a simple bump.
Yeah, and ninety-five percent of the time, it's, it's a single warning is all that it takes.
Right, yeah.
So with this, do we make a motion on this?
Well, if they're asking for a direction, we could at least make it professional, give them a...
Motion to?
Well, I make a motion that we...
There you go.
Maintain the current ordinance as written.
Alright, there you go.
Second?
I'll second that one.
Roger, discussion? None, please take a roll.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Smanski?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Humberto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes, thank you. Public comments and communication, uh, this time, um, anyone left in the audience that has a comment, please come to the podium, name and address, please. None?
There you go.
Okay, thank you, staff reports?
What do I have?
Your staff, your, your staff.
I'm, okay, um, I'm trying to think if there's, I think, uh, you guys got, did you guys get training packets for the HDC, I know they expressed some interest on, on sharing those with you guys, you didn't get those yet, okay, I'll make sure you guys get those, we were having some copies float around, they're...
Sorry, 'cause I'm on the HDC.
Yeah, so, the, the HDC received some training manuals from the state, um, that, uh, two different ones, and, uh, they expressed some interest in sharing them with the other entities, just to make everybody a little more familiar with it, and, and just kind of the, the guidelines we follow, um, through, uh, through the state and the feds, so, I'll make sure those get to you guys, um, as, you know, I know some of you were there last night, so, as, uh, as development season is slowing down, I'm, I'm gonna start focusing more on text amendments and stuff that I've noticed throughout the busy season, that'll help make things clearer, I have a laundry list of them, my goal is to kinda knock those out in the winter, and we can get those out of the way, so that way, I'm just, it's like I'm just as busy as I ever was, and, uh, yeah, so I, I will keep you guys updated as those come up.
Nancy?
I have nothing.
Okay, move along to member discussion, we'll start with Roger.
Oh, I have, uh, life is good.
Life's good.
Yeah, uh, how about that hospital, are you still talking about putting people up there for, uh, winter time or something?
I haven't seen any applications, and I, I haven't had any, any contact on it.
You're talking about Gil Mercy Hospital?
Yeah, 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 we've, we've discussed that, um, I haven't heard anything on it.
Do we know what the situation is, is it still empty, or did they ever come back?
I'm not sure.
Because there, I see no cars there.
Right, yeah, I'm, I'm not sure, um...
Need a housing, for Christ's sake, they're sitting there empty, you know?
And, and there is, there is a push for, for a joint, um, housing person...
Okay.
To, to focus on housing development, um, throughout the county, and, and the part of that would be in the city, so, if and when that position ever gets filled, that would be a perfect jumping point for them to start off at, I think.
Okay, just asking, that's all, go ahead, no, thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Roger.
I'd like to congratulate Mick, I'm being re-elected, and Bob's wife, re-elected, and...
I didn't run.
You didn't run. Odd year, even districts.
Yeah, yeah, there you go. Oof, for running.
Okay, Marlene, anything else? Shelley?
I have nothing.
Ay, 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 ay.
You sure that's Shelley's name? You're not going for the devil, are you? Hurry now.
Excuse me, I missed that mark.
Deck, any more information or on the, the property on thirty-one in Mason, the, uh, the request for the drive-through, can you update the council on that?
Um, I, I'm gonna hold off on that one, I don't think it's appropriate time to, to, I can keep you guys updated, um, via email.
Okay.
Alright.
Bob?
I'm nothing here at the start, but, uh, I'm gonna look some stuff up, we talked about earlier today, see what, what's gotta be changed on that, make sure everything's kosher.
Keep your secrets, eh? Zach, I wanna thank you for, uh, taking care of the Fifth Street location on cleanup, it's cleaned up now.
Yes, I, I sent out, I had, I had to send out a couple of letters on that one, but I got it taken care of, yeah.
I noticed the other day that it's, it's cleaner than it was.
Good, good.
But that, um...
Wait, I do have one for you.
Okay, okay.
Um, any word on the fracas, I noticed that the front is, like, being completely cleared off?
Mm-hmm.
I saw a crane there yesterday.
Was there a crane there yesterday?
There was a crane there.
Taking the HVAC off the roof.
Wondering how that was going, had to do anything?
Yep, so, to my knowledge, um, the HDC hasn't seen any applications, so there hasn't been anything as far as a facade change, um, you know, unless something came in on my desk while I was gone today, but...
Haven't seen any movement on a tabernacle either, other than bringing in, uh, you know, haven't done anything on there.